Okay, I'm going to order the combined meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. Angarola, Ms. Bayless here, Mr. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Hauptman.
Here.
Mr. Candela.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations and we have Sparkle Spotlight for the core value of kindness. All right, thank you so much. So as you know, each month, we have been highlighting both students and staff from each building who have been able to exemplify our core values. For the month of January, we've been celebrating the letter K, which stands for kindness. So we will start this all with Ms. Morley and all of the wonderful winners from Diamond Lake School.
Hello, everyone. It is my absolute honor to present the Diamond Award for Kindness to someone who embodies the very essence of what it means to lead with care, compassion, and a student-centered heart. Laura Pardoon. Laura, you have a way of making every person you encounter feel welcomed, valued, and cared for. Whether it's a bright smile, a warm greeting, or a thoughtful gesture, your kindness shines through in all that you do. You truly set the tone for the day as students eagerly run to hug you each morning, excited just to be in your presence. It's a testament to the meaningful connections you create and the love and positivity you radiate. But what really stands out is how you consistently go above and beyond for our students. Just last week, in negative temperatures, during the freezing cold weather, you didn't even hesitate to meet families and students in the parking lot at their car and walk them to the door so their parents didn't even have to get out of the car when they were a few minutes late. That is just who you are, someone who puts others first and makes every moment an opportunity to show kindness and caring. Laura, your selflessness, your warmth, and your unwavering focus on students at the core of everything you do makes you an irreplaceable part of our community. You truly make this school a better place for everyone who walks through its doors. So, thank you. Come on up.
Oh, my gosh. Well, Eric was mad when I ran into her and I said, you know what, you could pretty much choose a name out of a hat for all the employees that deal with us because everyone there, it just oozes with kindness. I just feel so honored to receive this. You know, as a teacher, you really just, you just do it for the love of the kids and you don't know really that someone's watching and paying attention. So it feels really, really good. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this. Thank you. And now we'll have Ms. Budzik come on up.
Hello, everyone. So today I have the honor of celebrating someone who is, who truly makes our school a kinder and better place to be. I am so excited to present the Diamond Award for Kindness to Journey Butler. Journey is the kind of person who lights up the room the moment she walks in. Every single day when she comes to school with a big, bright smile on her face, she's ready to spread kindness wherever she goes. And she makes sure that everyone around her feels happy and cared for. Journey is always ready to lend a helping hand, whether it's helping a classmate with their work, answering a question, or just being there when someone needs a friend. She shows everyone in our classroom what it means to work together and take care of each other. What really makes Journey special is that she has a big, caring heart. If someone is hurt or upset or having a tough day, she's right there to comfort them and she always knows the right thing to say, to do, or help them feel better. Whenever she sees someone that needs help, she steps in even without being asked. So Journey, your kindness and thoughtfulness make a huge difference to everyone around you and you remind us how powerful it is to be kind and take care of each other. Thank you for being such an amazing example of kindness.
Those fancy boots.
Thank you.
So I am proud tonight to be able to represent for WOIS to highlight both our staff and pass it off to Ms. Split for our student that we are going to highlight. But for staff tonight, we are honored to mention WOIS social worker Lisa Brickert. As we celebrate kindness, Lisa is an exemplary employee who has a willingness to go the extra mile to support others. Whether through a thoughtful gesture, a listening ear, or actively helping with challenges, Lisa has a profound positive impact on our students, our staff, and our families. Lisa's work is an example of how we deeply care for our students. Her support has empowered students to self-manage and problem-solve and has created a support center for staff. Her consistent acts of compassion towards the D-76 community has also added to our positive and supportive work environment. Lisa's kindness is a true inspiration to all of us. Her actions demonstrate the importance of compassion, empathy, and a positive outlook with our community. We are honored to recognize Lisa with the Diamond Award and commend her for her dedication to making a positive impact on WOIS. Ms. Brickert. Congratulations. You're welcome. You're so great. Would you like to say a few words?
Um, just thank you so much for this recognition. It really does mean a lot to me. Yeah, and it's really easy in WOIS because everybody is so positive and kind. So it's, it just, it's very easy to be kind and to show that, right? So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. All right, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Split, who is going to recognize Ramon.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Ms. Split. I am the lucky fifth-grade teacher of such a great fifth-grade student. I am so honored to be able to present this kindness award to such a deserving student, Ramon Rosales. We're also proud of Ramon. He is such a hard-working student who consistently shows acts of kindness to support not only his peers but also his teachers. He is a naturally compassionate person and he always checks on those who are struggling or even upset. Ramon is always the first to offer helpful words of advice, strategies that have worked for him in the past when he is feeling down, and even a hug. He gives the best hugs, guys. He lights up the room with his positivity and his caring nature. He truly displays the quality of kindness and emulates what it means to sparkle on. Thank you, Ramon, for being such a positive influence and role model in our school. Keep up the wonderful work and we are so proud of you.
Did you want to say a few words?
Thank you.
To wrap up our Diamond Awards for tonight, I'll turn it over to Mr. Peterson, who is going to recognize the wonderful, kind people at West Oak Middle School.
Okay, so like Lisa said here, there are so many people within the district or within our building itself that, I mean, kindness just kind of exudes throughout every, every place in our, in our school and in our district. But it is my pleasure, though, to, to recognize Katie Sebretroff for being, for being our, this month's superintendent spotlight, for her unwavering commitment to kindness and positivity within our, our building but also our school district. As a dedicated educator, Katie consistently goes above and beyond to create an inclusive and supportive environment for our students, staff, and families. Whether through her thoughtful, kind, and supportive interactions with her colleagues, her compassionate approach to students' needs, and her efforts to foster a culture of climate of respect and empathy never really, never goes unnoticed. Katie exemplifies the values of kindness that enrich our school, community, does not go unnoticed, and is greatly appreciated. Her actions inspire others to lead with care and understanding and making her an invaluable asset to our school and district. So thank you, Katie, for your commitment and service to our school and district, and congratulations. All right, you have a speech written, right?
Of course.
Okay, okay. I just love putting you on the spot.
Yeah, no, thank you for your kind words, Brandon. I appreciate it. Kindness Katie, I mean, you know, has a little ring. No, I do truly value kindness. So this does mean a lot. It's such an important character trait to have. But honestly, anybody in this district could get this award. It's such a great place to work for and I really enjoy it and I'm really proud of this. So, thank you.
I might have to go to the bullpen here. Was that her actual nickname or did she just give herself a nickname? Oh, that it's Kindness Katie here now. Sorry. Yeah, you're stuck with that. All right, now we're going, so now we, we're going to call up to the podium two, two people that would like to nominate or recognize one of our students. So Ms. Carly Sklar and Ms. Hope Song.
We are honored to be giving this Diamond Award to one of our students at West Oak Middle School. Mrs. Sklar and Ms. Enriquez and I asked Mr. Peterson if we could do this award. Unfortunately, Ms. Enriquez could not join us, but she has a few words as well to say. So we'll start with hers. Ellie Sullivan is one of a kind. She is such a sweet person who never fails to put a smile on my face. She always stops me in the hallway to say hello or she'll pop into my classroom to catch up with me. She extends this kindness to strangers as well. When we were in DC, she made it a point to greet whoever she encountered and ask them about their day. Ellie is truly deserving of this award. Ellie leads by example, shows kindness, and inspires others to be their best selves. From day one, Ellie has shown such qualities as determination, empathy, and responsibility. When faced with obstacles, rather than backing down, she takes on challenges with enthusiasm and resilience. These are traits that not only make an outstanding student but also a role model for her peers. Beyond academics, Ellie also shines in her extracurricular activities. Whether it is in sports or clubs, Ellie takes the initiative to offer new ideas and works hard to make West Oak a better place. What makes truly special about Ellie? Her kindness. In every interaction, there is a constant sense of care for others by stepping up to help everyone or simply offering a smile to brighten someone's day. It truly has been a pleasure being Ellie's art teacher for the past three years.
I just wanted to take a moment, Ellie, to tell you how important you are to me. We had not crossed paths before this year, but I think we were destined to do so. Your kindness to those you know and strangers alike is unparalleled. You impress me so much, not just as a student but as a person. You bring something unique and special to the world and watching you grow after facing one of life's most challenging moments speaks volumes of your character and good soul. You will achieve things you may not even realize you're capable of and that is truly inspiring. Your voice, your ideas, and your efforts all contribute to making the L Project what it is. I love that you speak your voice and your truth. Don't ever lose that. You are who you are and you embrace everyone in your life, whether they are there for years or just in passing. I am so lucky I have gotten the chance to be part of your path and I hope you continue to see, I hope I get to continue to see where your journey follows. I am always here to support you and never forget that you are valued. I am so grateful that I get the chance to be part of your life. You will always be valued, not just for the things you do and your voice, but for who you are. Love you, sweet girl.
Congratulations. Oh, no. Yeah, that was, that was, that speech was way better than mine. So, uh, I think, I think she's not going to speak towards this, but thank you.
Okay, if we could just give one last round of applause for all of these unbelievable kindness sparkle winners. Thank you so much for the great presentations, the speeches, the tears of joy, everything. Love you all. Before you all leave, please be sure Mr. Hanson is going to grab a picture of all of our Diamond winners. You are more than welcome to stay for the live entertainment that's going to be provided for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but otherwise, Mr. Hanson is going to be taking some quick pictures and we'll get on with the rest of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Okay, now we're going to move on to our business agenda for the evening. The first item up for action is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Ms. Candela, Mr. Becker, Ms. Angarola.
Yes.
Ms. Bayless, yes. Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Mr. Hauptman.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Okay, that motion is approved. The next item up for action this evening is approving the Personnel Agenda. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the Personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one retirement notification and we have two resignations. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Hauptman.
Yes.
Mr. Becker, Ms. Angarola.
Yes.
Ms. Bayless, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Candela, Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
That motion is also approved. The next item on the Business Agenda is one for review and it's the replacement of the Diamond Lake School cafeteria furniture. Mr. Rogers, do you want to speak on it?
Yeah, so the memo and supporting documents shows just a conceptual drawing of what we anticipate the furniture to look like. So I've been working on this project for a little while now with Dr. Berger and now with Sunny here on just providing a more flexible and modular furniture for the cafeteria space. When you observe students in their lunchroom, it's a real rigid environment. Those bench seating just is really hard for the students to get in and out of and they really don't have a good chance of interaction. So this furniture allows a lot of different movement and could really be utilized as a different instructional space. So some fun tables, fun shapes, and I think the kids would really get a lot of use out of brightening up the cafeteria space. So the proposal would also include the furniture that we still have, it still has some useful life left in it. So we would look for a partner as part of our consortium of different school districts to sell and repurpose that furniture as well.
That's great. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a quick question. On the proposal, the quote, it says that the pricing expired at the end of December. Can you just clarify that that pricing is moved forward to the current?
Yeah, so a great point. I did receive this before winter break and let them know that I'd be presenting this to the board after. So the proposal is still good until essentially pending the board's decision. So if it's approved, then they would move forward with it. If not, then, you know, pricing still holds. Thank you.
Great. And then, um, would you like us to have that up for action at the next board meeting?
Yeah, if possible, we'd have it.
Only next week.
Uh, yes, we're right, we're right back into it. So that would be great. Yeah, the proposal, I know it's kind of informal since it's not the Business Agenda meeting, but I'd be presenting this for action.
Yeah, no, I just figured based on that, kind of that timeline, it would make sense. It looks very nice and I, I would think too, it would allow you to use the cafeteria for more things.
Yeah, it's really cool furniture and it's, it's, the middle school utilizes these bucket-type seating. It just makes it so much easier for these kids in giant clothes to get in and out of the seats and just interact with each other. So it'll be pretty fun.
Very nice. Okay, and then the next item is also for you on the reviewing the disposal or the sale of personal property.
Yes, this is the, the bane of the maintenance department's existence right now. It's the monument to our parking lot in the back here. So it's a 2003 Ford F-250. We've tried to repair this thing so many times. It's, it's now at the end of its useful life. 2003, yeah. We've, this thing has been rode pretty hard. So it's been used for a lot. Yeah, it's been used for a lot of snowplows. We do still have two vehicles the district's purchased in the last six years. So really what I'd be doing is we'd either be donating or selling this vehicle. And if I did sell the vehicle, I'd give the board an update. It would be for a very nominal amount and it would be, I'd get a whole harmless agreement that it would be not to be driven out of the parking lot and have to tow it away. So I've had a couple employees that have expressed interest just from a scrapping perspective. So we usually, usually like to utilize local families.
Yeah.
Or if there's an employee that utilizes those services as well.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about that? I think it makes a lot of sense. Okay, um, the next item up for action is Vision 2030. So, um, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at this. Essentially, this is the State Board of Education's vision for education through 2030. And it was, I know it was presented at the Joint Annual Conference. I'm not sure when it was presented, so if everyone saw it or not. Essentially, there's some, they gave us some background information on it, but it's rooted in a shared belief that students learn best and educators teach most effectively when they feel safe and connected to one another in their communities. This is the single most important thing we can do both to support both academic achievement and individual well-being and is something that has to be considered in our instructional approach, curriculum, and student support services and finances so that local districts have the resources needed to ensure that our school buildings are safe. A really quick overview is that Vision 2030 provides a roadmap to enhance K through 12 public education through future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding. It articulates the shared commitment to putting systems and processes in place that support all school districts throughout the state and sharing what works for our kids and our communities, and details plans to advance policy, legislative and fiscal solutions, leverage public resources, preserve local flexibility and leadership so that important decisions about curriculum and finances are made closest to home. So they've asked us all to adopt this by our January board meetings. So that's why I have it on that, the Agenda for Action this evening because we didn't have a chance to discuss it in December. I don't know if anyone has any questions or has any comments about it. If you refresh your agenda, you'll see it. It, we had it in the wrong spot. It got moved. Also, I think we all got an email about it. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah. Well, I, I mean, it sounds like everyone participated in putting it together. So superintendent, the school boards, the business officers. Okay, if nobody has any questions or concerns, then I would, then I'll just proceed with reading the resolution. Um, okay, whereas public education plays a defining role in ensuring equal opportunity for children in Illinois and throughout the United States, and whereas it is our collective duty to ensure that every student, regardless of demographic or geographic identity, has equal access to a quality public education, and whereas we believe that strides need to be proactively made to face challenges and continually improve our public education system, and whereas there have been three areas of prioritization identified as integral in improving our public education system, future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding, and whereas future-focused learning should address promoting future-driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration, enhancing student safety and well-being, attracting and retaining a high-quality and diverse educator pipeline, and promoting curriculum and instruction flexibility to meet the unique needs of local communities, and whereas shared accountability should address reforming the Illinois Assessment System to be a timely and useful measure of student proficiency and growth over time, reforming the current accountability system to provide local flexible, local flexibility for identifying indicators that create a more holistic view of student success, and reforming the mandate process to ensure implementation procedures that promote flexibility and local decision-making, and whereas predictable funding should address protecting the integrity and funding of evidence-based funding formula, strengthening public education through pension reforms, and establishing equitable funding sources for capital and safety needs, and whereas it is imperative that any education improvement proposal for comprehensive change must be developed and supported by not only the education community but in collaboration with families, communities, businesses, and others whose priorities reflect the best interests of the students. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education joins with the Illinois Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Principals Association, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, Illinois Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents of Schools, Superintendents Commissioned for the Study of Demographics and Diversity, Illinois Alliance of Special Education Administrators, and the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools in supporting the Vision 2030 Education Improvement Policy. And be it further resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education urges the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement the recommendations under the three pillars of education improvement as contained in the Vision 2030 policy. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Moved. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Angarola? Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Hauptman?
Yes.
Mr. Candela?
Okay. That motion is approved, and that wraps up our Business Agenda for the evening. Moving on to Board Discussion. I don't think we have any items for Board Discussion this evening. Freedom of Information requests, we had three. Two were fulfilled, and one appears to be junk. For notices and communications, we have a number of documents from CEDOL. David, when's the next CEDOL meeting? Is it in March? Okay, so nothing new basically since the last meeting. Okay. No, no, it didn't look like it. Okay, great. Then we have District 76 Highlights, and we have, oh, I just opened the blessings in a backpack video mistake. Then, congratulations to West Oak Intermediate School for their parent engagement. That was fantastic for them. And you guys gotta level it up, other schools.
Pizza.
I know, I feel like, come on. Well, people will do anything for some pizza, so. Nice job to everyone, though. And then, congratulations on the Marzano Level 2 recognition. That's fantastic. So, yeah, it's nice to see lots of good things. Um, okay. Moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. We've lost our audience, so it looks like we have no public comments or petitions. Moving on to others, did anyone have anything for others?
I just had that one item that I wanted to give an update about.
Thank you, sorry. I already forgot.
No, um, well, to go directly against the third pillar of the Vision 2030 Plan, I just want to give an update about the federal funding freeze. You guys might have heard that this morning. So it's already being challenged legally. My understanding is it's not illegal to put up my impression, it's not illegal to put a pause or freeze on the funding. It is legal to eliminate the funding source, since it requires legislative action. So I believe there's gonna be a challenge that'll uphold the freeze, maybe with some contingencies in place. So, the letter that I saw indicates that everything needs to be, all the legislative branches and the different organizations that are getting the federal funding need to provide feedback by February 10th. So it's about a, you know, week and a half timeline here. But what we know so far is, at this time, the federal government has already provided what they consider their FY24 funding, which was essentially last year for this year. So we're in FY25. We've already been allocated our state and federal grants. So, you know, we have a lot of federal grants, titles 1, 2, 3, 4, IDEA, transportation, food service, preschool for all. So we do get a good amount of federal grants, about 1.5 million a year. We've been allocated the majority of that already, and the district has already claimed a lot of that in terms of reimbursement. I like to get that done as early as I can during the year. The couple programs that have some question marks would be the National School Lunch Program. That's considered kind of an ongoing reimbursement program. They don't know what we're gonna be getting each year. It just depends on the monthly claims that I submit the month prior. So, that has a question mark, and then the IDEA has a little bit of question marks because it's considered a flow-through grant, flows through several agencies. We have a funding source that traditionally funnels through CEDOL. So we've been allocated a funding source, so we don't think it's necessarily gonna go away. But we're trying to anticipate all these pauses that are taking place right now. They don't think the majority of our programs will be impacted. The lunch program is my biggest concern. So as we are on a slightly different program, we're feeding all students free breakfast and lunch. And so I'd love to be able to make sure we can continue that. The other items that we're hearing about is, you know, certainly any new programs are seeing a pause. So I've applied for several federal grants over the last month or two. So that might be a food service equipment grant. There's a maintenance grant. We've already been approved. And then there's a Department of Justice grant I try to apply for each year. So that's a pretty high-dollar amount one. And then the biggest one that we have is the Food Service Community Schools Grant. So, that one is, I've not heard any updates from them on that one yet. So, it's not directly coming through to us. We do have several programs that are already approved. So until I hear from them, we're still planning on continuing. And if they do not get funded, if we determine the programs to be necessary for our students, the district would fund that. So, and we could always look to recuperate some costs later down the road. So, that might be some after-school extracurricular programs we're looking to do in February, March, and April. And then there's a, some several field trips that are going on. So, any questions right now about that? I know it's kind of still hot off the press. So, I'm not concerned yet. Once we get to February 10th, and if I hear anything different about the lunch program, I've heard the SNAP program, the Pell Grants, housing assistance, all those are fine. Social Security, Medicaid, nothing's being impacted there. I have a feeling the Child Nutrition Program is still gonna be unimpacted, but we'll see. So, this is certainly gonna impact funding and future programs, but as I get information, we'll kind of talk about some early budget assumptions and what that might look like. So thankfully, it doesn't make up an incredibly large percentage of our budget, but it does offset a lot of our anticipated costs. I will hopefully get something next week, and we'll update you guys as I, in my weekly updates as I get it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. And also, you reminded me, so Nikki and I went to the Legislative Breakfast last week. Was it last week?
Something like that.
At Stevenson with three of our local legislators. The one big takeaway that I think we got from that is that because of the budget deficit in the state of Illinois, they're looking at Tier 2 pension reform again, which would have, like, obviously a big impact on us if we had to start paying the contribution into TRS that the state is paying for. So, I talked to Eric about that. We don't know what's actually going to happen with that. But I guess because of the amount of money that that is overall, year-over-year for the budget, and the amount of a deficit that Illinois has, they're looking at actually doing something this year. I know it's, ever since I've been on the board, it's been talked about, and nothing has ever really happened, but all three of the people that were there kind of agreed that some movement, like they were expecting some movement this year. So, just something to keep in mind. Is there anything else you want to add?
The only other thing that I wanted just to kind of put in your radar is, like, some of the schools were talking about the potential of doing a countywide sales tax. It would have to be like a referendum. A certain number, percentage of schools would have to kind of sign on. And so, I don't know, just throw it on your radar just in case you hear about it. I don't think it's very likely to happen, but.
It would have to, someone would have to be very motivated, I think, to take the lead on it, because you would need to get a huge amount of other people to sign on. But it sounded very interesting, because it sounded like some of the downstate counties were using it to fund, you know, like, almost like capital improvements on their buildings and things like that. Also, it's another source of, you know, then people get some property tax relief, essentially, because you're not relying just on the property tax dollars. You know, anyone essentially passing through Lake County that would pay a sales tax, some of that money would go towards the school, so. It just seemed kind of, by the way they were describing it, it seemed like unless someone really wanted to spearhead it, it would unlikely, would not happen. Okay, I think that wraps up others. We will now move into Executive Session. For the Appointment, Employment Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the District or Legal Counsel for the District, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity, and for the Discussion of Minutes of Meetings Lawfully Closed, whether for purposes of approval by the Body of Minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06. May I have a motion to adjourn to Executive Session, please? Yes. Okay, awesome. That wraps it up. Thank you all.